Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting this June 22, 2021. We're grateful to have tonight with us Bishop Dale Bronner of my home church of Word of Faith Family Worship Cathedral, followed by the pledge provided by, from the sheriff's office, Deputy Okolovich. Bishop, please join us up front. Those who are willing and able, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we so thank you this evening just for life and for health and for strength. Thank you that where we are, you brought us what we know you taught us, what we have you gave us, who we are, you made us. I thank you, dear Lord Jesus, even for all of these commissioners who serve the public. Thank you for what you're doing in Cobb County. May you do something that is exemplary, that will become, that which will become a model for counties around this nation. May you, Father, teach us to love one another, respect one another, honor one another, grow with one another. May you help us to be able to build and to be secure in all that we do. Thank you for the peace that you bring even in our county, in every situation, for safe schools and safe neighborhoods and homes and safe businesses. May you continue to breathe upon us. We acknowledge your hand being upon us. And in the midst of all that we endure, we thank you for healing our land, for healing Cobb County. May you bless their minds, God, give them wisdom and favor, wisdom to know what to do, when to do, where to do, and with whom to do, and how to do it. And we will acknowledge that all of our blessings ultimately come from you. Now may your peace continue to rule and reign with us. Give us, God, ideas that will cause us to be able to excel in all of our ways, in that wonderful, matchless, and majestic name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our meeting is officially called to order. At the top of this meeting, we have three presentations. The first one is to recognize David Tyler for being selected as the 2021 Outstanding Professional Award recipient for the Georgia Chapter of Government Management Information Sciences for his work on the courtroom AV technology upgrade project.
So I'm, so I'm gonna, I just want to thank David for his hard work on this project in getting our courtrooms throughout the county upgraded to put us in a place where we can actually return to jury trials. And I'm going to turn it over to Superior Court in a moment to tell us their thoughts on this project and how important it was. But first of all, I want to turn it over to Michael Howerhan from the University of Georgia Carl Vinson Institute, who's going to actually present David the award.
Thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm just so fearful of public speaking. No, I'm on the faculty of UGA, and I'm honored to do this. We've had the opportunity to do this a little bit before. And I will tell you, standing in front of public service is amazing because the heart and soul of public service is servitude. And I think a lot of people don't understand what that means, because when you work in public service, you report to several hundred thousand people out there in the community. And so what public servants do, I think sometimes is unrecognized, and this is a great opportunity to in fact recognize what, what they do. So officially, let me read a couple of words, and then I'm going to take 60 seconds and ad lib, if I may. So the Outstanding Professional Award recipient to David Tyler for the Georgia Chapter of the Government Management Information Sciences Consortium, which is a consortium of professional IT and IS service professionals in the state of Georgia who dedicate their heart and soul, as I said, to making sure that technology and the information services that are provided to county residents are the finest they can be, the most secure they can be, and the best that they can be. GMS is in fact the largest professional organization in the United States in terms of professional societies for information systems. And Cobb Information, the Cobb Information Sciences Department is a member of GMS, and David is a member of that. So the Outstanding Professional Award recognizes someone whose contributions and performance result in an exceptional level of operational excellence. The University of Georgia Carl Vinson Institute of Government selects the award winner from this year about 85 nominations. And so David stands above, not only with his peers and colleagues, but above 85 peers and colleagues in similar positions such as her, such as his. The, David earned the award for his work, as Kimberly said, during the COVID-19 pandemic, when the Cobb County Judicial Court Circuit and courtrooms across the county were challenged to hold court hearings 100% virtually. David collaborated with the AV vendor for Cobb County to design a state-of-the-art system to equip 36 courtrooms and several jury, assembly, and media rooms for virtual hearings and digital evidence. So let me go off script. These folks, these folks do amazing work for the Government Management Information Sciences Consortium, which is a volunteer organization. It's a professional organization, but it's volunteer. And so they have their real job, and then they have another job, which is, you know, serving the community. We are fortunate to be able to get them together twice a year for semi-annual conference. It's been virtual for the last 18 months, so spring and fall of 2020, and spring of '21 was virtual. And we are fortunate to be able to get together in October '21 for in person. But each year, we select the Outstanding Professional and the Best Customer Service to the organization, meaning the constituents of public service. And David worked diligently to earn this award, as well as continuing to do his job. So I can't, I can't say enough. My hat's off. David, congratulations.
Can I get David's family to come up, please?
Well, hey, my name is Rob Leonard. I'm the Chief Judge of Cobb Superior Court, and it's, I'm really proud of David. And I just want to tell you all, and I'm glad his family's come up here. Your dad is a hard worker. I mean, and it's a stressful job. We've got jury trials going across the street, and he's, he really helped us become really the leader in the state. I get calls all the time about what is it that we're doing in Cobb? How are we able to keep our business moving so efficiently, both non-jury, domestic, civil, criminal? And so without David, I will just tell you, we would have been in a real mess, and we're just fortunate to have him. And for you to, you know, do what you did, not just for Superior Court, every class of court in this county has benefited from David Tyler. And so we're very appreciative of you, David, and very appreciative of this commission too, in funding that expenditure. I mean, I don't know what we would have done. So thank you all very much. And David, congratulations to you. Everybody wishes you well, and you've just done a great job. Thank you.
Since it takes a village, the entire group should be, no, it really does. You should be all awarding this today.
Sure, sure.
All right, y'all sit. Can we speed it just a tick? All right, here we go. Three, two, one. Thank you.
All right, our next proclamation will be presented by Commissioner Richardson to the Cobb Community Foundation for their work in caring for Cobb residents during the Cobb 19, excuse me, during the COVID-19 pandemic through the Cobb Community Food Fleet. Those who are here at the food fleet, please join us up front.
Thank you. What an amazing group. I know, we have a list. So thank you. Wait till everybody comes up. Thank you. Good-looking group. Surprise. Fantastic. Yes. So definitely. A little bit off script, just really appreciate having the opportunity to work with you and with everyone else up here, even in some capacity, and grateful to support all of the things that you do to continue to support this community. So what am I recognizing them for? Food distribution. On May 22, 2020, the Cobb Community Food Fleet received its first delivery from the USDA's Farmers to Families Food Box Program. The first 2,000 boxes were delivered to the fleet's first location, Truist Park, where nonprofits were encouraged to pick up and distribute the boxes to affected families. And more than 90 groups and organizations contributed to the management, delivery, and distribution of the food boxes, with 11 nonprofits handing out the boxes at over 50 locations throughout Cobb County. And we can share that list on the screen as well. And over the course of the following 12 months, 159,000 boxes of food, equivalent to 3.5 million mils, were distributed to the Cobb community. So now we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the Cobb Community Food Fleet and the organizations involved for their services to our community during the pandemic on this 22nd day of June 2021. Thank you. Round of applause, everyone. Would you like to say some words?
If I could, yes.
That was a mistake.
We cannot thank you enough for all that you have done to support this initiative. And most importantly, I cannot thank enough the people who are in this half-circle and all of those who are represented on the screen here. This was truly an example of community unlike anything that I have personally ever seen before. Organizations came together with one goal, and that was to make sure that our community did not go hungry. And I could not be more proud to be a part of this. I could not be more grateful for all of you amazing people, both nonprofits, for-profit organizations, who made sure that there were trucks that had fuel that got moved, that we had a place to go, we had a place to deliver volunteers. It was just an amazing initiative, and we thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say any words? Sure.
Now, now you gave it to the pastor, so we're going to be here a while. No. I just want to echo that. You know, part of what we do with Noonday Association is this collaborative work, bringing churches, nonprofits, businesses, government, everything working together in different communities. And for everything that we've been able to do up until March of 2020, it just went to a whole nother level. And I just thank God daily for so many of these amazing people. I have to give a big shout out to S.A. White. I mean, just keeping us fueled and moving our trailers to keep this thing going. It doesn't happen without the Braves and Cobb Galleria and others giving us a distribution hub and just all these partners. You know, one of the things I talk about sometimes is that we at Noonday, and I appreciate Darryl Price over here, our director, you know, we may serve as kind of the hub of some of this kind of things, but if all these different spokes aren't doing what they do, none of this happens. So I'm just grateful to God for allowing us to make some new friends and work a lot closer to with a whole lot of other friends in the last 18 months. And I also want to thank the commission. They have just been huge through this entire thing. When we, when we saw a gap in the, and by the way, we had the USDA program, in addition to all these amazing organizations, reflecting Trinity Sweetwater, Family Life Restoration, so many others packing food. But when we saw a big gap coming in December and January, we came to the commission and said, hey, and they just were, did everything they possibly could, gave us the money to keep this thing going. We were, we were the only ones in the entire country who were able to keep food flowing into these communities that were suffering long before COVID, but had been devastated since COVID. And so I just take my hat off and thank the commission so much for your support as well.
Thank you. All right, picture time.
more to address food insecurity and look forward to us continuing to help families in need at this time. Our next presentation will be brought by Commissioner Gambrill to present a proclamation recognizing June 23, 2021 as International Widows' Day in Cobb County. For those of you who are here for this item, please step forward.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for joining me. It is with great pleasure that I'm here to issue this proclamation. There are about 14 million widows in the United States and more than 258 million widows worldwide. In 2010, the United Nations recognized June 23 as the first International Widows' Day of awareness, and the day has been recognized annually since. International Widows' Day brings awareness to both the tragedy of losing a spouse and the hardships that widows suffer following the death of a spouse. The goal is to develop resources and policies that empower widows and give them access to the resources they need to rebuild their lives. By giving widows this recognition and a voice, it encourages them to discover all that is available to move forward and rebuild purposeful and meaningful lives with support of their communities. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize June 23 as International Widows' Day and thank the North Atlanta community of the Modern Widows Club for its tireless efforts to ensure widows in our community have the support they need and thrive. Thus the 22nd day of June 2021. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Thank you very much. On behalf of the hundreds of widows in our community that we serve, we'd just like to thank Commissioner Gambrill and also all the commissioners for this proclamation. Tomorrow is International Widows' Day, and so we will have this on our website tomorrow. And thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation period for this meeting. We will now move forward with public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The first speaker is Ms. Scott. And I'll remind all the speakers, you have five minutes to speak, and at the podium, there is a timer for you.
Please help in repeating your name once you-
Ms. Scott?
Greetings. My name is Quantina Scott. Here again, getting close to another moratorium coming to an end. Once again advocating for an extension of that moratorium to be extended. The funding is coming slowly. It has been announced through the HAC publicly that Cobb County, that the money is coming slowly. So I think that you guys need to try and come up with an extension by way of the county to extend the moratorium, even if it's not done statewide or even nationally. Cobb County has the ability to do that. And I think that you guys need to act on that on behalf of the people. My advocacy has come by way of some personal issues. My children's father at an early age was killed, was shot. I'm a single parent. I've had to raise two kids at an early age without another parent. I went through a bad divorce, lost a business. I had a woman who lived across the way from me, strangled, dragged down the steps, and left dead in a car. There are a lot of personal issues that come from people being deprived of receiving assistance. I felt that that woman, she probably wouldn't have got killed if she would have had power. Her electricity had got cut off. Domestic issue. We are in a pandemic right now where people are losing benefits. Unemployment is getting ready to expire. We have people who are getting ready to not be able to get assistance because the funding is coming slow. We have evictions that are getting ready to happen next week. And a massive, I shared with y'all last year, a tsunami is coming. This is real. This is getting really, really real. It's not a dream. This is real. This is happening. Just before I came here, I received a notice on my door that I owe a balance. The police was escorted with the management to deliver the notice. It was presumed to look like it was an official eviction. These notices have not been filed with the court. There are going to be a lot of residents who are going to leave within three days of this notice, thinking that it's an official eviction. That is bullying people. That is false accusation. That is, that is getting over on people who don't even know their, their basic fundamental rights, who will leave their home with children and be displaced on the street or in a shelter or scrambling to find housing. That's not right. That is not right. And I asked the board to come and talk to this apartment complex and to let them know that this is not right. You don't take advantage of people like that, nor do you use federal bodies of people to try and implement a plan. That's not right. Taxpayer dollars to have a police officer escort you to give a notice to people that is not a court order. That's not right. I'm holding this board accountable. The money is there for the funding. The funding is not the issue. The issue is getting the money out. We already had a plan in place last year. This is not the first time for COVID. You guys already have programs, organizations who had implemented. Yes, additional paperwork, but this is nothing new to the board. Why is the money not coming? What is the problem? Why are families having to wait three, four, five months just to get a couple of months of assistance? And why are the organizations playing games with paperwork, constantly telling you to give this, to give that? This is a game. You guys are playing games with people's lives. This is real. I want accountability from the board, and I want, I want action to take place with the board. You guys are leaders. People are looking to be led. You guys have a moment to make a mark on this county. This is the first time a whole woman board has been elected. You guys have a ability to make a mark on this county. And if you don't do it properly, this will never happen again. We will never see all women on the board again. So I hold you accountable, and I expect for you guys to act. And I have a solution. I look forward to meeting with you and discussing with you a solution to this problem. You guys have a good night.
Cynthia Johnson?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Johnson. Today, I'm going to wear a smile on my face because I cannot cry no more. It's been a long year, but I'm going to go back to my message. I moved here in 2006. I wrote a letter to Marriott Housing Authority because when I moved here, I was having issues. Before I relocated to this area, I had lived in a place where I felt my children were provided with a decent, safe, and sanitary environment, which I feel should be continued even after making the decision to relocate to such a larger city. The Section 8 qualified housing I have found, and also the list giving with possible Section 8 leads by the Housing Authority has either been with housing that are way over the program rent payment limit, or is mainly low poverty level areas. Although I have been concerned with the reasonable payment areas, I have made an effort by revisiting homes on or off the list and found what I've already expected. I have found that these areas and locations where schools have been on the need improvement list for several years, an obvious drug area, or simply unsanitary. I have, I've spoken with the director about if he could possibly give me an example where these concerns are not taking place so I could immediately pursue such leads, but she was unable to do so. Although my plans were to come here to seek immediate employment, I have spent more time trying to figure out the program to find housing for my family, which has caused unnecessary stress and delays. I have been here a month needing immediate shelter, however, without any resources and time near and close to my expiration date on my voucher. I'm hoping these concerns can be addressed and their resolutions would be, the problems will be solved. I want to say this. I do a lot of staying up at night. I do a lot of reading. I do a lot of calling to developers. I don't even know what I'm doing, but I'm doing this so I can provide you guys any solution. Maybe one day you're laying in the bed, one day you say, I remember Cynthia saying, let me, let me Google this. Let me research this. Let me see if this could actually happen in our community. That's all I'm asking. In doing so, I pulled according to a market feasible analysis report submitted by Real Property Research Group, submitted to Department of Community Affairs on behalf of a community within our community. I'm not going to name that, but it was submitted on October 28, 2018. Did these, it said that the DCH on page 50, DCH average market rate was $1,001 for one bedroom. Two bedrooms, it was $1,164. A three bedroom, it was $335. What they did is went into the community and they found comparable units to match this apartment that was asking for renovation expenses. So their one bedroom, they listed in 2018, was $1,045. A two bedroom was $1,266. Do you know right now, instead of paying $1045, you're paying $1,295. For not right now at this particular property, instead of paying $1,266, you're paying $1,525. Okay? That's not even the crazy part. How about another one? One bedroom, $1075. This was in 2018. A two bedroom was $1,255. Right now, a one bedroom is $1,455. That went from $10, $1075 to $1,455. I sat in a parking lot in the park today and called these places so that I can give you an accurate account. Only thing you need to do, please listen to me, pull up the- Only thing you need to do, please listen to me, pull up the analysis report. You know the community. You know the community. Date, October 25, 2015. Look at the data. Look what it was in 2018, and look what it is now. It's out of control. So let me give you some little things real quick. Number one, extend a more random beyond June, I agree. Pass the city orders. I'm going to keep saying that. Pass the city orders like Atlanta did in 2020 that says that they're prohibited from not accepting vouchers. How about the application fees? I just spent $475 last Friday on application fees for me and my daughters. I don't even know if I'm going to be accepted. Number four, increase the voucher amount. See if we can increase the voucher number to accommodate the market rent. These landlords need help too. They're not going to accept, I can get $1,500 from you, but I got a voucher that's only going to be $1,200. I'd rather go to you. Thank you.
Denise Strowman? Denise Strowman, you're next.
Good evening, Denise Strowman, Lisa Cupid, and all the commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm here today to talk about, speak about eviction. Eviction is expiring at the end of this month. We need to have it extended to next year. I'm thankful for the temporary assistance such as Star C, Cobb Home Savers. It's just that when you apply for these assistance, we're having problems on getting information back. We'll send emails and calls, but no calls back. After the funding is depleted, you will not be eligible to go back for assistance. The apartments, the apartment complex is going up on the rent. If I wanted to move to a new renovated apartment for a two-bedroom home, would be $1,600. Right now, my apartment is $1,400 for just a two-bedroom, and I don't have a new carpet. I've been in there for 10 years. The jobs that I have, the jobs are only offering 10 cent to a dollar raise. You worry about eating lunch because your coworkers are saying you slow down after you eat lunch. So you worried about eating lunch or taking a bathroom break. You have to work, you have to work two or three jobs to keep your head above water. That's what I might experience. We need more long-term assistance. There are men and women that want to work but cannot go to work because of their childcare expense, being disabled. We have school, we have summer school, but it's only provided for the children that are, did not pass to go to the next grade. So unfortunately, we have parents that want to go to work, but they can't afford to go to work because they need to watch their children. So it would be nice if that would be for everyone's children other than the ones that did not pass to go to the next grade. Without a home, the children, it's difficult to learn. So we need a home in order for them to worry about their grades and education. We need public housing, multiple-family housing. Cobb County, and especially the East Cobb area is a nice area, and the schools are nice, but unfortunately, they don't have the multifamily housing. I want my children to have the best education just like everyone else and their children's children. We do need, we do need, we do not need any families to be evicted and their belongings is outside where people can just pick up their stuff. If there's anything that we could do for the community, it'll be appreciated. Thank you so much for your time.
Felicia Williams?
Hello, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me a chance to speak. I want to basically touch on some of the things the other ladies just said. The rent increases, I worked a job where I worked where I made 10, and then it went up eventually to $11 an hour. My rent is over $1,000. So just imagine someone making $17,000, about $17,000 a month, paying over $1,000 rent, as much as $1,400. And you're making $1,700 a month. Then you have car insurance. You have gas, electric, so forth. You have to buy food. I looked up some numbers. Hopefully, they're right. I Googled them. But the states with the highest homelessness, Georgia is number nine on the list of 1 through 10. I'm not sure this number is right, but it's 10,443 homeless in Georgia at this time. 66.7 of the homeless, percent of the homeless is single individuals. The remaining 33.3% being families. In recent years, it increased nationally by 1%, which doesn't sound like much, but when you're dealing with hundreds of thousands or millions, I think that's a really large number. This number is made up of, nowadays, it's even starting to be unaccompanied, unaccompanied children and young adults and single adults experiencing homelessness. Also, I tried to write things down so I wouldn't be all over the place. And I think that if homelessness continues and the rate continues to increase, that it's going to increase crime. It's bad now, but it will get worse. For one thing, the homeless is dealing with malnutrition, dehydration, and so forth. And that could cause, that right there can cause mental illness. And the longer they are out there under those conditions, the worse it's going to get. And you have children that's dealing with adult situations. You see the water boys on the news. Those kids are out there trying to sell water to help parents pay rent and buy food. And kids that's out there hustling and trying to take care, keep a roof over their head, they're not going to be able to go to school, and if they're in school, they're not going to be able to concentrate. So it affects families. The top four causes of homelessness was lack of affordable housing, unemployment, poverty, and low wages, which of course overlaps, like I just said. If you keep in mind those numbers, someone making $1,700 a month, paying $1,200 or $1,400 rent. And I guess I would close. I saw a quote online, which I know a lot of people here do a lot to help people in the community, food drives and everything. So, but it's just a quote that said, "You shouldn't look down on a person unless you are looking at their shoes." And I know many here do help and care for people and try to help the community, and I thank you all for that. I lost my dad on March 1st. He was a kidney failure patient, and he had other complications. But I did go home for a couple of weeks. I stayed longer than I would have due to the COVID and the restrictions, travel restrictions. So I myself have a balance. My leasing office have been very kind. But I'm still behind and trying to catch up. So I know it's a lot of people that had issues due to COVID and losing loved ones and losing their jobs. And that's, I think I'm going to wrap it up there. Thank you for listening to me, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Monica Delancey?
Good evening, Monica Delancey, Riverside Community. First, I want to thank all of our guests here that have joined us. We have some young ladies and young men that came out, and I told them to be here by 5:30. And I'm so glad I did because Chairwoman Cupid came downstairs and said, "Why don't you come upstairs to have dinner with us?" So they didn't know they had that surprise coming, so thank you for doing that. Oh, they clap for you? Oh, they want to clap for you. They want to clap for you. So just to reiterate some of the concerns that were shared tonight, just the simple fact that we know that Cobb County was wall-to-wall with evictions prior to the pandemic, okay? On Fridays, at eviction court at 9 o'clock in the morning, again, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, there would be 150 people on the caseload. This was before the pandemic, and this was when the rent was around $800, $700 a month. So what we're saying is that during the pandemic, people have not returned back to work. They have not increased their wages, and so therefore, even after talking with some of the landlords last week, they said even when they get called up, they get behind again, they will file eviction again. So if someone gets called up on $15,000 rent and they cannot go back to the agency to get help again, they will be facing eviction maybe around Christmas time, okay? So therefore, we're pleading, asking, what can you do to tell that kids are not evicted from their homes? You're looking not just at the families, looking at the kids. Eviction of families equals failing schools. So we need to do all we can. Can we do an ordinance just for Cobb County? Can we do that? There's other states that, there are states that are extending eviction beyond the June 30th, and you have some cities and jurisdictions that are linking to what they can do individually in the county. So we plead with you, we beg you, because not one more eviction needs to happen. June 30 is less than eight days away. Eight days away, June 30. And so for those who, I want to share some tips. Number one, if you know that you are facing eviction, please communicate with your landlord. If you know you have not heard from anybody, that's what you need to do, first of all. Second of all, make sure you have a CDC moratorium declaration form on file. Make sure you have a declaration form on file. Number three, there are five agencies that have been commissioned from Cobb County to offer the $23 million worth of rental assistance. And those agencies are Sweetwater Mission, Musk Ministries, Center for Family Resources, Star C, and Cobb Home Savers. I've been told was, do not wait till you're behind to apply, because if it takes 30 days to get you processed too, let's go ahead and get you applying for assistance ahead. And then if you are uncertain about what notice you received on the door, don't just leave without contacting legal aid. Legal aid is answering the phone. Cobb County Legal Aid, they're answering the phone, they're responding back to you. They will guide you, and that's the advice to take. So even when you call my number, I'm going to tell you to call Cobb Legal Aid because I'm not an attorney. And also, I do want to share, do not ignore no notices on your door. If you see a notice that fell on the floor, you think that it might not have been yours or whatever, you might want to pick that up, because I've been told that there's some notice that's been placed on doors, but sometimes the wind knocks it off, so you don't know that's your notice. So we do want to share this out. If these tips cannot apply to you, make sure you share it with the neighbor. Somebody can use this assistance. And also join up with a group. I know every, the Thursday, Sons of the Month, We Thrive in Riverside Rentals Association, we host Resource Connection Zoom calls, where we not only share resources about rental assistance, we share job leads. We share, I know Cobb County Community Service Board was on a call with us. They did a presentation about, you know, getting assistance if you are going through mental health issues. And we also have elected officials have participated in that call as well. So we do want to say again, thank you for your time. We are going to stress long-term solutions, because at the end of the day, if you have not returned back to work, a person not returned back to work, they have not increased their wage to at least $20 an hour or more, they will be faced with eviction. Again, you have a great night. Thank you very much.
Christine Rosman?
Hello, Christine Rosman. Thank you, Chairman Cupid, Chairwoman, sorry, and commissioners. I wanted to talk about things that are actually, I guess, water under the bridge at this point, which, and we talked about at the last meeting, which is zoning. And I believe that the Cobb County residents have really made it clear what they want. And I don't know if that's really reflecting in what ends up getting voted on. And so it becomes a kind of a disconnect in between what we want and what you all vote on. And so it doesn't really reflect your constituents. So I guess I'm questioning whose values, who is that reflecting? Is somebody else influencing you all on decisions you're making on behalf of your constituents? I see I'm getting the double eye roll again. Anyway, but that was especially like with Dobbins because of the impact, the potential impact that could have of us losing Dobbins totally, which would be 1.5 billion, I think, impact for Cobb County. And it just, it doesn't add up, and we're trying to figure out, like, I didn't go to it, but my neighbors are working with you, Joanne, with Sprayberry Crossing, and that looks like that was, the decision was made there. And again, it doesn't seem like it's reflecting what the constituents want. So who is influencing these decisions? And I think it's happening all over Cobb County. I go to the school board meetings, and we're not even, I mean, thank you very much for like letting us sit together and not have masks on, but even Cobb School Board, you can't even go to a meeting. They bring you in one at a time if you want to speak. And I don't, it's kind of like, what's happened to Cobb County? It used to be like a really awesome community, and it seems like it's getting really divided. And like, what has happened with this? So that was with the school board, and then Board of Elections yesterday. That was actually kind of sad because we, some friends and I came to the Board of Elections meeting. It was the first time that that was in person, which was great. But when we were voicing our concerns, and, you know, thank God we're in America, we do have that First Amendment right where we can actually speak out and have a voice. And, you know, like, just getting ridiculed by, and, you know, snarky little comments from people while speakers are speaking. And I thought it was really, it was kind of taken aback a little. Later yesterday, when the Cobb County Democratic Party Facebook page had this to say, "At the Cobb Board of Elections meeting today, Cobb GOP Chair castigated someone for letting out a laugh while some of the GOP's finest were at the podium doubling down on election fraud narrative. In all seriousness, it's hard not to laugh when the GOP trots out these accounts of fraud. Today's sampling was from a woman who claims she saw stacks of mail-in ballots that had no creases in them and therefore must have been fraudulent." And once again, allegations from the Cobb GOP Chair of ballot shredding in Cobb County. I know this isn't your gig, because this was another meeting, but when it starts talking like this and just saying, you know, like, rest assured, GOP Chairwoman Grubbs, these new appointees are dead serious about protecting integrity. I mean, why can't we just be civil with one another and listen to one another and be accountable? I've never worked for the government before. I don't know what that's like to not be held accountable, because I think we're trying to hold you accountable by saying what it is that we want, what it is that we expect, and then it's like we watched this train wreck happen because it doesn't happen. I mean, I, and I, there's a lot going on. And the women that came before me, I feel for them. I absolutely feel for them. And you know what? Cobb County has money, and I hope to God we just are good stewards of it. Y'all took an oath to be good stewards of the money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman, that concludes our first six speakers today.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Before we move into the consent agenda, Commissioners, we have two additional items to add. And I move that we add an item number 39 and item 40 from Human Resources to approve a settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Laverne Bennett and to also approve a settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Michael Cole. I believe there was a second. Is there any discussion on adding that to the consent agenda? All right, we'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. With respect to the consent agenda, the items have been scrolling on the screen prior to the start of our 7 o'clock meeting in person, if you're here with us today, or at home, or on the computer, on the computer screen, or on the television screen. They will also scroll on the screen at the end of our meeting. I believe we've had some modifications to some verbiage, mostly from technical or grammatical changes. Nothing substantive. So if I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. And let me get my additional statement, and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
This is in regards to Agenda Item Number 24, specifically regarding Z8, which was a rezoning application by Beazer Homes LLC. And it was approved by the Board of Commissioners via the consent agenda. I would like to request a clerk's note that I intend to make a motion at the July BOC zoning hearing to amend something previously adopted, so these minutes can accurately reflect my intent to include specific language for stipulation number four under Z8, which was inadvertently left out of the necessary stipulations when approved by this board's consent. I will request the necessary agenda item for the July BOC zoning hearing agenda. Thank you.
Excuse me, my mic wasn't on. Is there any further discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second. And we'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. We will now move forward with our regular agenda. The first is Agenda Item Number 25, which will be brought by one of our county attorneys, Debbie Blair, to approve an appropriation of funds to support the significant need for food to those negatively affected by COVID-19, and also approve grant administration fees.
Yes, Debbie Blair with the County Attorney's Office. And as the Chairwoman stated, this is an agenda item for the appropriation of funding from the American Rescue Plan in the amount of $1.5 million for food assistance grants plus fees for grant administration in the amount of $75,000. The grant will be available for the purchase of food vouchers, food boxes, food from food banks or pantries, and food distribution. There will be a two-week application profit, excuse me, process. And the nonprofits will be evaluated based on the factors set forth in the agenda item. Following an award, the funds will be distributed on a reimbursement basis. It is requested that the board approve the appropriation for food assistance as presented. Any questions?
Thank you. So I'll move that we approve the agenda item. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, and if there's any further discussion or questions for Debbie Blair, this would be appropriate time. Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, several of my questions weren't answered yesterday from the work session, but I did have a nice conversation with Kimberly Roberts today. And I have the following comments regarding this agenda item. The American Rescue Plan was put forth to aid communities and populations hit hardest by this continuing crisis. Last year, the county allocated $1 million towards insecurities and received over $1.5 million in requests. This allowed each applicant to receive a percentage of funds requested, no matter the size of their organization or the number of people served. Item number three in a memo dated June 9 of 2021 will now restrict the amount of funding an organization will be eligible to receive based on the number of individuals served, ranging anywhere from 25% to 100%. I find this offensive, as this agenda item comes on the heels of an email request for over $600,000 for a specific nonprofit that received preferential treatment this past November, when the board awarded an additional $350,000 for food for them alone. Under these guidelines, they would be funded 100%, as they will purchase over 2,600 boxes, which are then delivered to smaller nonprofits to distribute. Many of our smaller nonprofits and churches are helping fill the need in the community and are supplementing fruit and vegetable boxes that have been handed down with items such as protein, as carrots and potatoes alone do not provide a meal. These smaller organizations will be restricted in the amount of funds to be reimbursed to only 25% of their request due to the smaller number of people served. This seems out of balance to have a larger nonprofits purchasing what seems to be the low-hanging fruit and vegetables, yet having, yet leaving the most burden on the smaller nonprofits and churches that provide the most costly portion of the meal and substance to those facing food insecurities. Therefore, I'm unable and unwilling to support this agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any additional comments?
I thought we revised that for the rank and rated.
Yes, you'd have to turn on your mic. There was substantial discussion regarding this agenda item yesterday. In fact, we've been working on this agenda item for probably about a month right now, because of several nonprofits that have communicated to the county that federal funding for food distribution would be cut. And they've asked for us to step in and help close the gap by providing them the opportunity to serve many families in need. I think that what the Commissioner is sharing is certainly reflective of her concerns and assessment, but it is not characteristic of, at least my perception, and I would argue perhaps some others that are on this board. There were a number of nonprofits associated with last year's program and with this effort that will be able to assist many families in need. And if there's any disheartenment I have, and I know that it's important for us to get the administrative details correct, but it's with our communication to the administrator of this program that all organizations at which to provide food that apply will be assisted to be able to help assist our residents. At the end of the day, this is about helping families help to make ends meet who are struggling to put food on their table. And I'm grateful for the partnership that we have with WFN, who is a continuing administrator of our grant programs for the federal government, for them being willing to step up and provide this. If there are any questions that the Commissioners or the public has with respect to how we are distributing food, please know that we are certainly more than willing and able to reach out to WFN to make sure that we are abiding by all necessary requirements of the federal program and that we are treating all of our nonprofits fairly. It's very important to us, and we do not take it lightly, to be able to work with our many partners that stand in the gap for us every day. And so with that, I would ask the Commissioners for their support in approving this agenda item, so that we can address the many people who are still in need and that are having trouble feeding their families and themselves at this time. With that, again, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 25 as presented. In fact, there already was a motion and a second. We had discussion. So I will call the question.
I have a follow-up question.
Would you... Okay, Commissioner Gamble.
So again, I had a discussion with Kimberly Roberts, because yesterday in work session, I asked specifically what was going to be used to evaluate the applications. Kimberly Roberts sent me this document that was dated June 9 to Dr. Jackie McMorris. And I was told that this is the criteria that is going to be used to evaluate all the applications. So are you telling me that this has been changed since this morning? And why wasn't it an updated criteria list?
Yes. Commissioner, we all have a revised agenda item, which has changed verbiage to provide the application period, which will be for two weeks. And applications will be evaluated based on the following factors: having a primary goal to distribute emergency food to insecure populations in order to aid in efforts of food insecurity alleviation, numbers of persons served, amount of funding requested, and previous experience in food distribution programs. There has been no additional revision, and that revision was made in reflection of concerns that you shared to show that they would all be evaluated based on that criteria. I'm not aware of any additional revisions. County Manager, are you aware of any additional revisions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And for our county attorney, are there any additional revisions?
None that I'm aware of, as well.
Okay. So the motion still stands for us to approve the agenda item per the revision that we all received yesterday. I'll call the question. The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Thank you. We will now move on to our next agenda item with the Sheriff's Office.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize the expansion and renovation of the undeveloped areas of the Cobb County Public Safety Training Center to be used by the Cobb County Sheriff's Office, utilizing funding from the 2016 SPOS not to exceed $500,000. This expansion and renovation will consist of four classrooms and four offices. The expansion and renovation will assist the County Sheriff's Office in eliminating current space constraints, expand its ability and improve and meet training needs of the agency for both sworn and non-s sworn personnel and provide optimum opportunities in partnership with the Cobb County Police Department and to authorize the appropriate budget transactions.
Thank you. I'm glad to see this partnership take place at that facility. Because it's in District 4, I'm going to call on you, Commissioner Sheffield, to make a motion.
I make a motion that we... Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 26.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Or I will call the question. And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here tonight. We will move on to our transportation tab with our interim DOT Director Drew Ressler. Yes, you have had a very busy day. And we want to thank you for the great presentation that you helped to provide today during our work session.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
DOT has eight items for consideration tonight. First, recommend the Board of Commissioners to approve the concept plan for roadway safety and operational improvements on Lower Roswell Road, Project Number E6020, and authorize the department to proceed with the project.
All right, Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA Section 32-3-4. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on South Barrett Reliever Phase 3, Project Number X2407. Adopt a resolution in order in form substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any further discussion? I'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners amend a previously approved action determining that circumstances were such that it was necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA Section 32-3-4 on two parcels on Sandtown Road. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on Parcel Number 3 as amended for this project. Adopt a resolution in order for Parcel 3 as amended in form substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Yes. Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize acceptance of the assignment of a contract with Carlson Construction Services LLC to Luminate Transportation Technologies LLC for advanced transportation management systems, Intelligent Transportation Systems Communications, ATMS-ITS, Phase 1C 2 and 3A, Project Number X2502. Approve change order number 2 to the original contract in the deductive amount of $780,089.60. Approve a First Amendment to the assigned contract. Approve change order number 1 to the assigned contract, a no-cost time extension through December 31, 2021. Authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transaction. Authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number 2 to the contract with Baldwin Paving Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $12,885.60 for intersection improvements on Hicks at Concord Road, Project Number X2307. Approve a contract time extension through August 31, 2021. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
I'm drawing just a blank. Commissioner Sheffield. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number 1 to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the Cumberland Community Improvement District for Advanced Transportation Management Systems, Regional Connected Vehicle Deployment Program, Cobb County Project X2503, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number 1 to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Smyrna for thoroughfare and mobility improvements on Wendy Hill Road, Project Number X2402. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? I'll call the question. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item tonight is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a revised budget and current schedule for the 2016 Transportation Improvements Program, funded primarily by the 2016 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and authorize corresponding budget transactions per the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program budget and schedule attached.
All right. Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next tab is for Public Safety. And we are going to hear from our Fire Chief tonight.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Fire only has one item tonight on regulars, to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of one aerial ladder apparatus and four replacement engines from 10-8 Fire Equipment in the amount of $4,733,845 for fire and emergency response, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. All right. Next, we have our Support Services tab with our IS Director Kimberly Lemley. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. As you are all aware, cybersecurity threats and attacks are increasing exponentially throughout the world, our country, and at a local level. These threats are becoming more and more sophisticated and put our county more at risk every day. Although I'm extremely grateful for this board's support, as well as past board's support in providing the funds necessary to implement new security technology, it is very clear that additional security software and hardware are no longer enough to protect the county's network, assets, and critical infrastructure. The crucial need to increase... The crucial need to increase our multi-layered cybersecurity defense is a team of dedicated security staff to proactively protect and defend our network and mitigate the risk against the daily threats. The four new positions I'm requesting tonight will put us at the minimum staffing level needed to continue to build our defenses against cyber threats. The reality of the world that we are living in today is that no system or network will ever be 100% protected from threats and attacks. But with your support, we can continue to build a strong cybersecurity posture to make us less vulnerable and more equipped to defend the daily attacks. With that, I'm bringing forth our item this evening to request the Board of Commissioners approve the creation of four new positions within the Information Services Department to establish a new cybersecurity team. Approve a general fund, fund balance appropriation in the amount of $46,389.25 for the remainder of fiscal year '21. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Yes, discussion, please.
Just want to clarify again that this is for the entire county, not just BOC.
Yes, ma'am. We are an enterprise IT department in the county, and we support the network for all departments and elected official offices. So we will be protecting everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Dita, I want to thank you for all that you've done and continue to do. And I know this agenda item, should it be approved tonight, will go a long way to helping you continue to support our county.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So we've had a motion. Second, is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 401 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next tab is our County Managers' tab. We will have Dr. McMorris present Item Number 37.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners.
Good evening.
It is my pleasure to bring this item to you. It's hard to believe that it's been about five years since the county actually took an in-depth look at our comping class graded positions across the entire county. Having taken a look at what our other jurisdictions and others with whom we benchmark, we have already identified that Cobb is a lot lower in a lot of our positions than our counterparts. Not only are we experiencing retention and recruitment problems within our law enforcement, and we are addressing that, and thank you for doing that, but we are also bleeding across the county as we are losing people or hard to even get people in very critical positions. So tonight, I stand before you to ask you if you would authorize the issuance of an RFP for consulting services to conduct a comprehensive pay-in-class study for our employees. As I mentioned before, it's been recommended by industry standards that we do this about every five years, and we have not done that. And so we will take an in-depth look, looking at some of the factors that all of you have brought to our attention that we should probably consider as we look at this study. So tonight, I ask that the Board of Commissioners authorize the issuance of an RFP for consulting services to conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study for all of our county graded positions.
Motion to approve as presented. Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
So, Dr. McMorris, so is that going to cover sworn and non-sworn positions in this study?
Yes, ma'am. We will be looking at everything. And what we're looking at is the non-sworn, but they will also probably take a look at what we're doing as it relates to stepping grade as well. We would spend more time and ask them to look at the non-sworn positions. But if they're going to be looking, they probably will look across all of the positions.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
And that will be addressed in the RFP?
Yes.
So this is just to authorize an RFP be put out to bid? And anything, results, what we get, funding, whatever, will have to come back to us for approval.
Yes, ma'am. We will ask you to approve the vendor and the cost of the study at that time. You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions? We have a motion, a second. We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We are on to our second public comment period.
Yes, Chairwoman, we have one additional person to sign up. Ron Seifert.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I wanted to address you tonight. Was here this afternoon for the work session and saw the presentation on the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And there were just a couple of items that I wanted to address. First of all, I've come to you before over the last couple of years and talked about the proposal for bus rapid transit to run in the future, express lanes along I-285. And that initial proposal ran from Smyrna to Northlake Mall just based on the fact that the original study that was done was paid for by all the cities and CIDs between Smyrna and Northlake. DeKalb County has already requested that it go all the way down to I-20 and connect to the Indian Creek Marta Station. Now, I've been encouraging y'all to instruct for it to extend all the way down to I-20 and connect to the Holmes Marta Station. And hopefully, y'all are going to do that. But based on the presentation today, there are numerous discussions that have to be had, one of which is that the Comprehensive Transportation Plan needs to include, needs to be tweaked to include that change. If you don't get it into the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, then in the future, when you need to get funding, it won't qualify for funding. It has to be in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. So you don't need a study right now in order to do this. You just need a very small tweak to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. I would urge you to instruct Kim Lee Horn to make that change. The other thing that I would like to address is, it came up today, questions about the viability of bus rapid transit on Cobb Parkway. And I was actually on the Advisory Committee for both the Alternatives Analysis and the Environmental Analysis for the Connect Cobb Study. And we had extensive discussions about some of the problems. The study itself, in the end, the actual, and this was actually front-page news in the Marietta Daily Journal and the Atlanta Journal-Constitution when this story came out. The study itself admitted that if that project got built as proposed, it would actually make mobility in the Cobb Parkway corridor worse than if we did nothing. Now, that's a problem. So I don't know that it was a question of the project not technically being viable, but why would you want to spend $500 million, a billion dollars, whatever, to make mobility worse? If you put that on the ballot, that's going to be a problem. So you've got a problem with the only study that exists because the only study that exists says, if you do this the way that it's proposed, it will actually make future mobility worse than if we do nothing. So that's a big problem. And then, as far as rail coming to Cumberland, go back into the Northwest Connectivity Study, and that study identified several very major obstacles that would be extremely expensive to fix, even in $2,002. So it'd be much more expensive today. So no subsequent study has ever come up with solutions to the obstacles that were identified back all the way in the Northwest Connectivity Study. So I just wanted to bring those to your attention. But the most urgent thing is, please get Kim Lee Horn to tweak the Comprehensive Transportation Plan so that the I-285 BRT would come all the way down to I-20 and connect at the Holmes Marta Station. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our public comment. We will now move on to our Commissioners' address, beginning with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. Our next District One Town Hall is coming up this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the North Cobb Regional Library. You can join me and Cobb Police Department Deputy Chief Stuart Van Huyser as we soar through Technology in the Police Department. The library is located at 3535 Old 41 Highway Northwest in Kennesaw. We look forward to seeing you there. Yarnstorm. This is the second year that the District Attorney's Office has partnered with Live Safe Resources for the yarnstorm. It was a great opportunity to bring awareness to elder abuse in multiple ways. Many people on the square inquired about the significance behind the yarnstorm art illustrations. This was a great way to spread awareness and speak about WEED World Elder Abuse Awareness Day.
Next slide.
A special thank you to Cindy Bard, the elder abuse victim advocate for the District Attorney's Office, and Laramie Floyd, the program coordinator for the elder abuse MDT. Our Cobb 4-H shines again. Out of 34 students competing at the Junior/Senior DPA Public Speaking Contest, we have eight Cobb County 4-Hers advancing to the State 4-H Congress to compete to earn the Master 4-H Status. Congratulations on the students who are listed on the screen. We also have the Georgia 4-H State Horse Show winner in the hunt seat discipline, Emma Bear of Harrison High School. She earned Master 4-H Status for her state title. Check out our upcoming programs on Pine Beetles. This event is free of charge and virtual. For more information, you can call 770-528-4070. And last, I would like to introduce to the community the Community Incident Response Foundation. I had the pleasure of meeting Officer Mike O'Brien at the Kennesaw Juneteenth Festival on Saturday and learned what he is doing here in the community. In 2018, after assisting families in need due to Hurricane Florence in eastern North Carolina, Officer Mike O'Brien felt the need to assist in his community in Kennesaw. So he gathered equipment and resources to respond to incidents quickly with the following services. Not only providing meals, he provides mobile laundry, mobile bath and shower, and communications. Being a nonprofit, funding for these equipment and resources needs is entirely donated-based. He is also looking to partner with different schools in the community that would essentially bring his trailers to the schools to allow children to wash their clothes and take care of those needs, or even come to various communities to address. To learn more about Mr. O'Brien and his nonprofit, you can visit www.communityincidentresponse.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll next hear from Commissioner Richardson.
All right. Hello, everyone. So from our office, we've got several events coming up. And if you're interested in attending them, certainly visit the constituent website that we have, dtocobb.com, and you can keep abreast of all the going-ons from the district. And also, schedule time with me if you do have anything you want to chat about. But this month, we have coming up, or next week, we have June's Acts of Kindness. So it's that time of the month again where this particular one, we're working with Cobb WorkSource, and it will be a resume workshop with the organization. And do note as well, the focus for this particular Act of Kindness is long-term unemployment. So that will be the group discussion thereafter and all of the complexities associated with that. The Q2 Town Hall has been set for July 15. Mark your calendar. It will be an exciting town hall with all types of highlights and certainly what we've accomplished thus far in Q2. And this weekend, Community Huddle. So we kicked off last week, the return of the Community Huddles, where you just hop on the call with us on the weekend. You can talk to me about anything you want to talk about. It is just a Zoom call that's open, and we have very frank conversations. So it's a great way to also meet people that live in other parts of the district as well. So what programs do we have running out of our office right now that we are actively recruiting for? So Master Plan Ambassadors, as you all know, as shared in the Q1 Town Hall, there are about nine distinct communities, different cultures, different expectations, different desires for those communities and how they are supported. And so we have an open call for anyone that wants to help be a part of creating those master plans and expanding some of the master plans that are currently in place. I can tell you right now, I still need some more representatives for Vinings, Indian Hills, Oakdale, Powers Ferry Corridor, and Cochise Area. In other areas, we are definitely full because we're accepting up to five per community. So please, if you're interested in being a part of that and helping drive that discussion with your neighbors and your community, apply. Mobility Survey. So this is an extended form of the CTP survey that's going on. And you heard some of the results that came back at the work session. The Mobility Survey is kind of an extended form where we also look at the overall vision for Cobb County. What do you want to see over the next 30 years when you think about your community? And what place your kids, where they'll live? So if you're interested in also adding to that, please include, please fill out the Mobility Survey as well, and we'll be able to tile that information together and have a really complete picture for the district. And then lastly, we are closing out Stop the Spread. So if you do have a company that you are excited about because of the work that they did during the pandemic, what they were able to contribute, and you want them to be highlighted, please nominate them so that they can be in the runnings for a special recognition. Community Updates. So we've got the Family Fun Safety Days. They're being held at the Cobb Safety Village this summer. Enjoy family-friendly fun and educational activities for children of all ages. Come tour Sparky's House, play safety games, get up close views of emergency vehicles, and more. It is July 8 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Thursday. The cost is $5 per person with a maximum of $20 per family. Group rates are available for 20 or more people. Virtual Lunch and Learn, the Plankton and Ponds. This is a program set up by our Water Department. Learn all about the microscopic organisms found in our local ponds with Mr. Sprangler as he shares live videos of common plankton. Register at the QR code. And this will take place on June 25 at 12:00 p.m. through 12:45. This is a virtual event. Lastly, Summer Food Service Program. Cobb Public Library is teaming up with Georgia Educational Resources to host free summer food service program distribution events in June and July. Children ages 18 and younger will receive seven days of breakfast and lunch emergency meals on a first-come, first-served basis while supplies last. Distributions will be held in library parking lots at six locations around the county. Recipients will remain in their cars. Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center takes place from June 8 through the 29, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. And that concludes all of my updates.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Last week, we were honored to reopen and have a ribbon-cutting for Switzer Library. As many of you know, it's our main flagship library located in the heart of Marietta. And it's also our busiest. And it underwent major renovations with a lot of improvements and new space renovated. And it's just beautiful. It's really well-done. So the project was funded by SPOS and also the Georgia Public Library Service Grant that we received. It's located at 266 Roswell Street in Marietta. And you can visit cobbcounty.org livery It's located at 266 Roswell Street in Marietta, and you can visit cobbcounty.org/library for more information and all that it has to offer. We also visited a Spacemaker Room that has a 3D printer, and upon request, I have a little 3D printer dog that reminds me of my little scout. I know, don't make me cry. Beyond the end zone, this Saturday, you don't want to miss this, the Davis Direction Foundation that, in the Zone, which is a rehab place for opioid addiction. Most of you probably know Missy Owens. She and her husband founded the Davis Direction Foundation. And this Saturday, June the 26th, from 3:00 to 7:00, they are hosting a pledge, pass, and punt triple option with NFL superstar Darren Waller. And it is a fundraiser for the Zone, and you can get more information or purchase tickets at davisdirection.org or email info@davisdirection.com. And it's going to be held at Mount Perrin Christian School in Kennesaw. Okay. Grab your fishing poles. Cobb Parks staff is hosting annual fishing rodeo in July. And this year, the competition is open to children ages 3 to 16. Trophies will be awarded, and you do have to bring your own fishing gear and bait. So Lost Mountain Park in Dallas Highway, Powder Springs, will be July 10th. Ebenezer Downs Park, our newest District 3 park at 4057 Ebenezer Road, will be July 17th. July 24th at Hyde Farm Park in District 2, and July 31st at the Fur Family Park in Powder Springs, District 4. So visit cobbcounty.org/parks and click on the Outdoor Nature tab, or you can contact John Purcell at (528) 8825, or email. United Military Care, they've got their six program, got their six program offering support to veterans for six months of the year. And July's Giving Campaign is called All American Collecting. Individuals are asked to support veterans by donating pop-top cans, beanie weenies, and Vienna sausages. Individuals serving applesauce and peaches, granola bars, and small bottles of water. You can visit unitedmilitarycare.org for more information. Uh-oh, what happened to my picture?
Can you click it again?
Well, it's a picture of a cute little lab, but last week, Mr. View adopted a handsome white and tan Labrador mix from the Cobb County Animal Shelter, thanks to our Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets program. We thank him for his 12 years of service in the U.S. Army and for his support of this program. We are up to 191 adoptions, and thanks to the generosity of Superior Plumbing and Cobb County Animals Shelter. So you can visit and like Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets on Facebook, and you can fill out a form if you're a veteran and go adopt your new best friend, dog or cat. And since we won't have another meeting until after Independence Day, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and celebrate America and our freedom. And to stay up to date on happenings in District 3 and Cobb County, visit our website, cobbcounty.org/burrow, and sign up for my newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. District 4 News and Updates. County and community collaboration strikes again. Join us on Sunday, June 27th at 4:00 p.m. for ribbon cutting ceremony at 875 Riverside Parkway in Austell. The Riverside community has a new garden for residents to grow food and relationships. It is a family-friendly environment that offers educational opportunities on gardening. Raised beds are also available for those with physical challenges. It is encouraged to witness so many residents engage in the zoning process and sharing their concerns regarding new development. Your participa, your participation in the process is appreciated. And while there are objections to zoning applications, there are just as many that are in support. Join me and our Planning Commissioner, Michael Hughes, tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. for our June installment of In the Zone. Please email deidra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. We all have questions. Are we in a post-COVID-19 pandemic period? How will schools operate? Will municipal governments reopen to the public? What can be expected from businesses and economic development? Is affordable housing available? Well, join Star C on Thursday, June 24th from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m., as we are joined by key stakeholders to discuss how the state is preparing our businesses, schools, and communities for life after the pandemic. What a great Juneteenth celebration at the square this past weekend. Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration of the end of slavery. Dating back to 1865, it was June 19th when Union soldiers landed at Galveston, Texas, with news that the war had ended and all enslaved people were free. This was two and a half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. The celebration of June 19th was coined Juneteenth, and just last week became a federal holiday. Save the date, July 31st from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., we will host a Career Fair and Tenant Forum. We will have employment agencies, Cobb Works, Cobb Police, Cobb Sheriff's Office, and many others on-site to recruit for employment opportunities. The Career Fair and Tenant Forum will be an excellent opportunity to connect with employers. We will also have nonprofit agencies on-site to answer COVID assistant-related questions, as well as provide information for available resources. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. You guys set the bar very high for all of your presentations. I'm very impressed. There's anyone recruiting for television anchors? I think you found them up here on the Board of Commissioners. I hate to follow these ladies, but somebody's got to do it. With that, as they're pulling up the slides, we have our update for today's meeting. I want to reiterate our top goals for the year, which are to address COVID-19, response and recovery, transportation, housing, social justice policing and equity, and finally, elections. We'll move on to the next slide. We are very pleased to be wrapping up our large vaccination and initially testing site at Jim Miller Park. We had an excellent event where we got to interface with a lot of the volunteers for that site, including those with Cobb Douglas Public Health, many of our staff here in Public Safety, our National Guard, and as well as meet and co-mingle with other elected officials that helped to ensure the success of that site. But even though the COVID rate is coming down and we're doing better, we still have more work to do to get more people vaccinated. We have, 41% of our population has at least received one dose. 38% has received, or excuse me, are fully vaccinated. And while we are ahead of the state average, we are far behind the goal that has been set by our president, and for us to be able to move forward comfortably and get to this new normal. So if you have not been vaccinated, you can please visit our Cobb and Douglas Public Health to learn more about vaccination sites. And their phone number is listed below if you would like to learn about more vaccination sites that we have available across the county. And their number is (833) 974-3366. And this is a picture of the ribbon cutting. We have a YouTube link if you visit the Cobb County channel on YouTube. This is part of our closing ceremony for the Jim Miller Park site, and I can't commend Dr. Memark and her team enough for the sacrifice that they had with the number of them camping out at Jim Miller Park for over a year. This certainly took a toll on, on a lot of them because of their dedication to all of us, and I appreciate, again, all of us doing our part, but we need to continue to do so. Today, we had a work session which was extremely informative. Again, I want to thank Drew, our interim director for the Department of Transportation, for providing an update to our comprehensive transportation plan, along with Kim Lee Horn, as well as reviewing where we are with our mobility referendum next year. We certainly have a lot of work cut out for us to determine some key decision points of, of whether or not we want to support both surface transportation and transit. Are we still, you know, confident in moving forward in 2022? Or, you know, should we move forward in 2024 as a consideration brought up today? And as well as some other factors. Do we have an increment of a penny for each of those BLOSS? Do we go up to two pennies? So we'll be working diligently, and we'll likely have a decision at the end of this year to determine how we will specifically proceed. If you see any of us wearing the same clothes and the same picture that we have on today is because this actually took place today. All right, we'll move on. Moving on to elections, we have House District 34 is in the midst of a runoff, and if you live in that district, we encourage you to please get back out to the polls. There is advanced voting taking place between July 6th and July 9th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. You can go both to the Cobb County Elections and Registration Office, or to the North Cobb Regional Library for early voting. Housing. Certainly, our hearts go out to the many speakers that come to each of our meetings, addressing their plight that they're having and that others are having to keep a roof over their heads. As has been shared, many families have been struggling prior to the pandemic, and the pandemic has exacerbated the condition of, of a lot of our residents here. We have received about $23 million, and I'm pleased to say that within less than three months, we've given out over 25% of those funds to over 3,000 applicants. And speaking to our providers, this is unprecedented for them to be able to give out this amount of money in such a short amount of time. And while it's frustrating for a lot of our residents who may be in the queue and who are learning about these programs, I can assure you that all of the commissioners on this board are extremely mindful, concerned about how we're able to help our residents. Many have contacted our offices individually. We've been working with our county attorney and county manager to connect as many as we can to our providers when they have specific questions about their application, because we don't want to see anyone without a roof over their head during this time. So I can't encourage you enough to please reach out to one of the agencies that are providing funding. And if you are having any difficulty, please feel free to reach out to us diligently. We will do what we can to help any family during this time. Just this last week, we had a couple of beautiful ribbon cuttings. Commissioner Burrow shared the opening, reopening of the Switzer Library, and we also have the opening of a Second Chance Help Desk, which is a partnership of the Georgia Justice Project, the DA's Office, Cobb Solicitor's Office, and the Circuit Defender's Office, as well as many of our judges in both the Superior and State Courts. And it really truly takes partnership, even when you were here for our presentations and you saw the many nonprofit significant that we do here as a county is taking place by way of partnership. And this is an excellent photograph to, to prove that. And we want to encourage residents who are interested in getting their records expunged that have had, that have had an encounter with our detention center or for offenses of a year or less, to please email the Second Chance Desk at secondchancedesk@cobbcounty.org. There's also a phone number here at (404) 834-8604. I also want to recognize that we have IS and property management in this photo too, because it takes partnership to make sure we have the infrastructure to facilitate these things as well. So thank all of you for going above and beyond. Okay? That's the, that's our final slide. I want to reiterate, as Commissioner Burrow shared, we hope everyone has a very happy July 4th in recognition of the freedoms that we're all able to enjoy because of the sacrifices for those that were before us. I hope you have an enjoyable time with friends and family, and we hope to see you again at our next Board of Commissioners meeting in July. Thank you and have a good evening. Thank you, and have a good evening.